Morning. Mister Deputy Registrar, you have the floor. Thank you, Honorable President. Good morning, Members of the Court. Good morning, dear Representatives. On this day, tenth of June, twenty twenty-one, we have a public hearing. In this case, uh, zero twenty-eight, uh, uh, we have the case again between Benin versus and Malawi versus Mali versus Malawi, United Republic of Tanzania, the Sahrawi Arab Democratic Republic, Mauritius. Uh, we have representatives of Malawi, Tanzania. Uh, uh, they're all represented. We also have Malawi, we have Tanzania, who has joined us, we also have Palu, a friend of the court. I thank you, Honorable President. Uh, thank you, distinguished, uh, Deputy Registrar. We have a quorum, as per the protocol. And for this purpose, we will ask the applicant or to his legal counsels to make some oral observations which will be useful for the court. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, the Honorable Judges. Femi Falana is my name, I represent the applicant. The applicant is present in court. With profound respect, the applicant is relying on the following documents, which were filed before the court. Our application dated nineteenth of October, twenty eighteen. The notice to file pertinent documents and information dated fifteenth February, twenty nineteen. Our reply to the response by the fourth respondent, our reply to the response of the fifth respondent, as well as our reply to the response of the eighth respondent. From our application, we have formulated three issues, which are contained on page two of our application. Uh, I deem them as read. The fact in support of this application, with respect to the Honorable Judges, are contained on pages, pages two to five of our application. And essentially, the, 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 the facts are not indisputed. The facts are to define that Morocco, the Kingdom of Morocco, and the Sahrawi Arab Democratic Republic are member states of the African Union. And in spite of the right of the people of Western Sahara to serve determination. Yes?
Mister Femi Falana?
Yes?
Can you hear me, please?
Yes, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please, Akaya. You?
I would like, I'd like to apologize on behalf of the court for this interruption. Can you please, uh, 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 repeat your introduction so that it is well noted? And then the court, through me, it would like to in-inform you that you have thirty minutes to make your submission.
Thank you very much.
Can you please start all over again? So that we give you exactly thirty minutes.
Alright.
Thank you.
My, my name is Femi Falana. I am representing the applicant who is currently present in court. The application before the African Court is dated the nineteenth of October, uh, twenty eighteen, filed by the, the twenty eighteen, filed by the applicant. The applicant is a Ghanaian citizen and is the national chairman of the Convention of People's Party, a political party in Ghana, which is committed to the struggle for the total decolonization of the African continent, including Western Sahara. The defendants before the court are member states of the African Union. And all of them have ratified the Constitutive Act of the African Union, the African Charter on Human and Peoples' Rights, the Protocol for the Establishment of the African Court. And they have also made declarations recognizing uh, uh, individuals and NGOs to access this honorable court. With profound respect, the case before the court pertains to the legal duty of the defendants to defend the sovereignty, the territorial integrity, the independence of Western Sahara, and other human rights, in particular, the right of the Sahara people to serve determination, the right to control their natural resources, and their right to participate fully in the government of their country, that is, of Western Sahara. The relief sought by the applicant plenty are set out on page two of our reliefs. Essentially, the applicant is asking this honorable court. Can I go on, please? Somebody was, the, the.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Mister Falana. Excuse me, Mister Falana.
Yes?
You, you will of course be continuing, but apparently, there is, uh, a hand that was raised before you started, which unfortunately, we could not see on the screen. Can we please interrupt you? Because there is a country, Malawi, who wants the floor, please.
Alright. Thank you.
Uh, Mister President, um, my name is Oliver Gondoy. And I'm representing the government of the Republic of Malawi. Um, indeed, I raised my hand to raise, um, a preliminary issue. Actually, there are two issues that I would like to raise before this honorable court. And perhaps, um, if the court directs, um, um, Malawi on this, on these two issues, um, we should be able to proceed, um, uh, based on your guidance.
We.
Um, I have the honor to inform the court uh, that prior to this session, um, the government of Malawi requested, uh, time for extension of time to file the submission. And I was hoping that the court would grant us the, the request and, um, give us ample time to competently argue, uh, the case. But, uh, we were not given a response to, to that effect. So that is the first issue that I would like to raise. And secondary, um, for, for the purposes of preparations, um, and in the interest of justice, uh, the, the government of Malawi feels it would have been better if the court had furnished, uh, the respondents, all the respondents, uh, with the submissions, uh, from other respondents as well. Um, as respondents, um, we feel we have the right to cross-examine our fellow respondents in case we have, uh, a different position or argument. And as of today, we have not received the submissions from all the respondents. We, we don't know what their arguments would be. And it is based on this foregoing that we would like to request that perhaps this court should, um, furnish the, all the respondents with their responses or with the submissions from other respondents, so that we can prepare, uh, in the event we, 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 we may need to cross-examine, uh, our fellow respondents. So, uh, it, it is our submission and prayer that at this point, um, we cannot competently, uh, proceed uh, because of these two issues. Um, first that we requested extension of time to submit our response, which were not granted. And secondary, we don't have the submissions from other respondents. So, um, at this time, I don't think the government of Malawi would be competently, uh, arguing its defense, uh, in this regard. So I'd like to submit, um, subject to your direction, that perhaps, um, the, the applicant may proceed to, to, to state his case and allow the respondents time to, to, to submit their, their, their responses. And, uh, at the same time, the court should furnish the, the, the respondents with their responses from other respondents. Because as respondents, we have the right to cross-examine our fellow respondents if we have a variant position or argument. So I wanted to raise these two preliminary issues before we proceed. Thank you, Mister President.
The President is mute, has muted his mic. We can't hear you, Mister President. Your mic is mute. I was saying, sorry. I'm sorry about that. I was saying that the court has taken good note of your two preliminary, uh, comments and they will be included in the case file. Uh, there is time, uh, allotted to Malawi. Um, and I think this will be part of the Friday program around, uh, uh, noon. And that will be the time for you to make your comments. And the court will of course, uh, uh, send you the documents you have asked for. In the meantime, let us, uh, allow the, uh, applicant through the person of Mister Femi Falana to continue making his case. And then we will come back to your issue tomorrow, when Malawi will speak at noon on Friday. Thank you.
Much obliged, Mister President.
Thank you very much, Mister Vice President. If I may proceed, I submit that the relief sought by the applicant are set out on page two of our application. The fact in support of the application are set out on pages two to six. And with profound respect, we wish to state that, uh, the parties are at idam on the facts of this case. In other words, the parties are, there is no dispute with respect to the facts, the factual background, you know, uh, of this case. And I mean that both the Kingdom of Morocco and S A D R are members of the African Union. And that in spite of the membership of, of Western Sahara in the African Union, the body decided to admit Morocco toy's fault uh, in twenty seventeen without taking cognizance of the fact that Morocco has continued to occupy part of the territory of S A D R. And obviously today, that situation has not changed. The parties are not in dispute over this, uh, uh, fact. And we have submitted that there are decisions, uh, adversary opinion of the International Court of Justice, decisions of European Court on Human Rights, uh, and a lot of resolutions of the African Union of former, uh, uh, Organization of African Unity, recognizing the territory of Western Sahara and on the part of the United Nations. Efforts are being made but frustrated by Morocco to conduct a referendum so that the people of Western Sahara can be given the opportunity to exercise their right to serve determination. The issues for determination, which we have set out at three. And we have addressed them in our copious, uh, 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 submissions before this honorable court. And our position with respect is that pursuant to Articles three and four of the Constitutive Act of the African Union, the defenders are legally obligated to ensure that the rights, the human rights of the people of Western Sahara to sovereign equality, independence and independence among the member states is respected, the respect of borders, existing on achievement of independence, peaceful resolution of conflicts and the prohibition of false. We have also alluded with profound respect to the fact that in spite of the clear provisions of the relevant, relevant provisions of the Constitutive Act of the African Union, the defendants and others decided to admit Morocco as a member of the African Union. And since Morocco became a member of the African Union, the, the, the respondent states and their counterparts have not taken concrete steps to guide Morocco out of the territory of Western Sahara. In the process, the human rights of the people of Western Sahara are being violated on a daily basis. And we have cited cases to prove before this honorable court that the actions of Morocco and particularly the continued occupation of the territory of Western Sahara is not allowed under the Constitutive Act. We have also addressed this honorable court in our written submission that to be fair that Article nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three and twenty-four of the African Charter on Human and Peoples' Rights, i.e. the right of the people of Western Sahara to serve determination, to control their natural resources, their right to independence, their right to political participation and their right to environment are being grossly violated by the Kingdom of Morocco to the knowledge of a consent, as it were, of the defendant. And we are submitting that by virtue of the provisions of the African Charter on Human and Peoples' Rights, particularly Article one, all the member states of the African Union, including the respondent states, have undertaken to recognize the rights, duties and freedoms enshrined in the charter and also to undertake to adopt legislative for other areas to give effect to the rights guaranteed by the charter. And we are submitting with profound respect that so far, the respondent states have failed woefully to carry out their duty under Article one of the charter. We are also submitting that by virtue of Articles nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, the respondents individually and collectively are under a legal and compelling duty to assist a member state of the African Union, that is S A D R, to free itself from the colonization of Morocco. And finally, we are submitting that in view of the clear provisions of the African Charter on Human and Peoples' Rights, the international covenant on political and civil rights, international covenant on socioeconomic and cultural rights of the United Nations, as well as the Constitutive Act of the African Union, the Kingdom of Morocco ought to be compared by the respondents to the African Union to respect the human rights of the people of Western Sahara. In adopting our written submissions, we wish to say that we have joined issues, we have responded to the defense filed by the fourth respondent state, the fifth and the eighth respondent states. And of course, since the issues raised by second, third and seventh are similar in every material particular with the objections of the fourth, fifth and eighth respondent, we have not deemed it fit to respond to them. In preparation for the hearing of the substantive case, this honorable court has formulated some issues for the parties to respond to. We have already responded in writing of the issues formulated by this court, again, wish to adopt our submissions in this respect. In addition, Milon, we want to say on domestic remedies, we submit that domestic courts lack jurisdictional competence to hear and determine the violations of the human rights committed outside their territory. In other words, in each of the member states, the municipal courts cannot hear and determine violations alleged to have taken place outside the territory of the respondent states. Not even the courts in Ghana can entertain the complaints of the applicant. Would therefore, submit that this is the only judicial forum recognizing Africa to exercise jurisdiction in respect of the subject matter of this case. Furthermore, we submit that assertion of domestic remedies is applicable where the violations of human rights alleged can be challenged in domestic court. That is where a, a, an applicant or a victim of human rights would be expected to go through the entire judicial gamble of his or her country. But in this case, the allegations of human rights violations which have been submitted before the court are outside the territory of each of the member states. Now, with profound respect, the respondents have also taken us done issues with us and is part of the issues formulated by this court that the allegations of human rights uh, in this, are alleged here, the, the human rights violations are alleged here have taken place outside the territory of the respondent states. And therefore, how can the court exercise jurisdiction? With profound respect, the African Charter on Human and Peoples' Rights has not defined any territory. The African Charter is specific on violations in any part of Africa. And Western Sahara is part of Africa, which is under colonization. And we submit here that the apartheid regime in South Africa, when the apartheid regime in South Africa violated the rights of the people of South Africa for several years, the respondent states and the entire members of the Organization of African Unity came together to fight apartheid until it was defeated. In the same, in the same vein, the respondent states and other members of the African Union fought for the decolonization of the Southern African region. Nowwithstanding that all the violations that occurred in the Southern African region have nothing to do with the territory of each of the respondent states. We also submit that in the case we have used honorable call to take judicial notice of the case of ex-president Isna Abrey, a former dictator in charge, who was alleged to have violated the rights of people and killed over four thousand people. This, the African Union.
Mister Falana, Mister Falana?
Yes, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
The court has appreciated your submissions thus far. And indeed, we have followed with interest what you have, uh, submitted. You have another means available to you. Would you have any witnesses to, uh, complement or supplement your submissions at this point? Do you have any witnesses to present to the court?
We are not calling witnesses. We are not calling witnesses. And I go on, got my thirty minutes, I'm not over here.
You have five minutes.
Alright, I, I am submitting that notwithstanding that allegations alleged against ex-president Isna Abrey took place in charge, the respondent states and other members of the African Union resolved and ensured that he was tried in Senegal. Nowwithstanding that none of the violations took place in Senegal between the year two thousand and two thousand and eight when he was in power. On non-interference, the respondent states are so, we cannot interfere in violations of human rights in other member states. This belongs to the past with profound respect. In the days of Idi Amin of Uganda, Abacha of Nigeria, and Yadema of Togo and the rest of them, you know, uh, um, um, Central African Republic, Bokasa. Yes, that was the principle then. Today, Africa has become one continent against, uh, human rights. And that is why the African Charter, you know, uh, was endorsed by all the member states. And we are submitting that non-interference must not justify the violation of human rights and the right of African people to, uh, uh, independence on whether our case, uh, is, is, uh, uh, compatible with the provisions of the Constitutive Act. I've already read Articles three and four, uh, uh, to the hearing of this honorable court. And would therefore like to end by saying that the case of the applicant has not been challenged by the respondent. Or they are saying, oh, we are passing resolutions or we are collaborating with the United Nations, you know, to ensure that, uh, Western Sahara becomes independent. But we are saying that is not enough. The respondent states have a duty under the African. The respondent states have a duty under the African Charter and under the Constitutive Act to go beyond passing resolutions. And that is why we're urging this court, and we have preparation, to order the respondent states to do the nifl in line with the relief sought by the applicant. We thank your lordships for your kind attention.
Merci.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Femi Falana. The court has followed your presentation and submissions with great attention and we shall integrate them into the record. The question we would have is to ask whether how many, how many respondent states are connected? We have Malawi. Which other country is connected, please? Which other respondent state is connected? We have Tanzania. Mali. Mali. Mali is also online. Would there be any other respondent state connected to the court proceedings? Apparently, we will have only three respondent states connected. We thank once again Mr. Femi Falana and we shall now call upon the respondent states to make their submissions. The first of which will be Benin. But unfortunately, Benin is not present. Is Benin presently connected to the proceedings? In alphabetical order, there is Cote d'Ivoire, Burkina Faso, and then comes Ghana and Mali. Can we therefore hear the observations to be made by the respondent state of Mali? Mali, are you available? Yes. Could you please make your submissions on this matter? Thank you very much, Mr. President and honorable members of the court. I'm Yusuf Jarra and I'm legal counsel for the state of Mali. You're most welcome. Thank you very much, Your Honor. Mr. President, honorable members of the court, I am here as the representative of the Malian state to support its interests in this case because Mali has been mentioned by Mr. Morna concerning the violations of the people of Sarawi Republic. Honorable President, your honors, we have made our written submissions and we are therefore ready to defend the position of Mali in this matter. We shall not go back into all the grounds that were developed in the written submissions submitted by Mali. And we would like to underscore some pertinent issues in this matter. First of all, Mali is mentioning the lack of jurisdiction of this court to hear this matter. This lack of jurisdiction is based on Article twenty-nine of the Rules of Court, which determines the jurisdiction of the court. We believe that the matter, matters raised by the applicant do not define the field of competence of your court. We also believe also that this matter rather should be presented to international organizations, which in our view constitute a, 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 a matter to be considered by governments. We also believe that the abundant contribution of the French government in the matter, which should be mentioned in your court, should be of concern to you. The incident twenty-three of the said document, this incident concerns the relationship concerning diplomacy and relationships between states. And concerning jurisdiction, the administrative laws are taking into account these different instruments. Therefore, the matter before the court deals with diplomacy and relationships between states and do not fall under the matters to be considered by this present court. We therefore believe also that the matter before the court is under the jurisdiction of international organizations established for this matter, in particular, the African Union and the United Nations respectively. And this is why we wish that the court declares itself as lacking jurisdiction to consider this matter. But if the court were to reiterate its jurisdiction, Mali would reject the admissibility of this matter before the court. In fact, the matter for, for, for the matter to be admissible, the applicant finds that it is, it has locus standai in order to seize this court with regard to the violation of human rights. It, the, the locus, the locus standai is relevant from the harm caused to the victims. It would have to be established that the persons were individual victims of the violations and the peoples and, for the peoples of the S A D R. There are violations of human rights that are alleged. Consequently, the recourse ought to be declared inadmissible before your court. Now, secondly, and lastly, if by extraordinary means the court were to set aside these issues, we believe that we need to have recourse to our submissions as a defense. But we would wish to draw the attention of the court to some items that appear to be important to us. First of all, Mali has never had any act against the human rights of the peoples of the Sarawi Republic. Secondly, within the African Union, it was admitted that there was a, a, an admission of its members. Therefore, consequently, the applicant should not attack any members of the African Union whatsoever. Thirdly, at the Summit of the African Union in workshop, the heads of state and governments of Africa adopted unanimously a decision which affirms the exclusivity of the United Nations as a framework for the discussion of the Sarawi matter. By that decision, the African Union assisted from this matter in view of the presence of the United Nations. Secondly, this matter is for the African Union to consider. Therefore, not even one state or any member state should have any matter for the solution that we are seeking. We solicit inform and we wish to state that the court is lacking jurisdiction to consider this matter. Consequently, we find that it is lacking admissibility on the merits. This should be declared as without foundation and it should be dismissed. Those are initial submissions concerning this matter, which is presently before the court. And I thank you. Thank you very much, Your Excellency, the representative of the Republic of Mali, a respondent state. The court has taken due note of your submissions and they shall be placed on a record. So, we thank you. We shall now call upon, we still have some time before the break and we shall call upon another respondent state is Malawi, which was earlier present. Are you still present, the representative of Malawi?
Much obliged.
And are you ready to make your submissions at this point in time?
Before I make a presentation on the submissions, I have another issue that I'd like the court to guide this session. It's the issue to do with the presentation that has been made by the applicant. I take note that, well, certain procedures such as taking of plea haven't been done. The, I'm not sure or I'm not aware whether the applicant himself is, is, is in court. To this end, I have this issue. I think it is fair and it is right that in the pursuit of the rights to a fair trial, a defendant or a respondent is or must always be given an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant. In the instant case, we, like Malawi, has got few questions to ask the, the applicant in this case. And we don't have that opportunity because the applicant himself is not here. So how do we proceed along these lines to, for, 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 for the respondent, for Malawi to ask questions to, to, to the, to the applicant as it is within our rights? So how do we, I'd like to see the court's direction on this one, whether Malawi can proceed to cross-examine the applicant in this case? Because we write to cross-examine the applicant. And now we don't because as it has been indicated by counsel for the applicant, that the applicant will not, will not give evidence. So I'd like to see the court's direction on this one. We have questions to ask the applicant. Thank you very much.
With profound respect.
Merci.
We thank the representative of Malawi to respond. The court has indeed given you the floor and you can make your submissions. If your submissions are in the form of questions, you may proceed. And I believe the other parties will also be kind enough to respond to those questions that you may have. So you do indeed have the floor and you may indeed ask your questions.
Mr. President, if I may add something?
With profound respect, Mr. President.
Oui, le vice, le, le, le d'ordre de la Cour.
Yes, the dean of the court has a statement to make. Judge Kierke, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Honorable President. I, I wanted to bring to the attention of counsel for Malawi that every court has its own procedures. And the procedure at this court is that you can only cross-examine a witness, somebody who has appeared before the court as a witness and has been sworn in as such, in which case cross-examination is allowed. What is happening today, the court is dealing with this matter by way of submissions, written submissions and oral submissions. So the question of cross-examination does not arise. However, when you make your submissions, you can make them the way you want. You can ask questions, you can, you can point out to questions and issues that have not been responded to or exercised upon by the, by the applicant. But there's no opportunity for you to ask questions and a cross-examine. This is a matter that is studied by submissions only. So I thought I needed to clarify that. So in your submissions, you can ask questions, you can point out what has not been responded to, but it should not be by way of cross-examination. It is not allowed under the procedures of this court. The only time there is cross-examination is when there is a witness. And in this case, there is no witness. I think the lawyer for the applicant said the applicant is in court, the applicant is present but has not presented, has not been presented as a witness.
Honorable President, I'm, I'm sorry. It seems the whole time the dean has been speaking-
We have taken due note of what you have said, Dean. But apparently, the interpretation was not available in French. Malawi, would you be ready to make your submissions at this moment?
Sorry, there was, Mr. President, there was something registrar was trying to clarify.
No, I was drawing the, the- when you were speaking.
The registry, you have the floor.
No, Honorable President, I was drawing your attention to the fact that there was no interpretation when the dean was speaking.
Can I, can I summarize, can I summarize what I said?
Raise my hand.
Mr. President, can I summarize what I said? Mr. President?
I was saying that what has been said by the dean is very important in regard to the procedure before this court for the benefit of the representative of Malawi. But if you wish to repeat what has been said by the dean, you may do so, Dr. Enno. It would seem that the microphone, his microphone is not on.
The applicant's lawyer, please.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Falana, just a minute. Malawi, do you understand what I said? I was saying that there is no cross-examination allowed because that is only allowed when there are witnesses. And at the moment, there are no witnesses. However, in your submissions, you can, you can point out to questions that should have been responded to and which have not been clarified. It is up to you how you make your submissions. But we do not have a process where you can cross-examine a lawyer or anyone who is not a witness. Now, having said that, Mr. President, I think the applicant's lawyer would like to say something in response to Malawi.
Thank you very much, Judge Dean. Mr. Femi Falana, you have the floor unless Malawi is asking to speak once again before you. Mr. Femi Falana, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. The Honorable President and the Honorable Judges of the Court, I think my learned colleague from Malawi rarely have to decide what he wants. Before now, he has asked for time to file his papers and this Honorable Court has graciously allowed him to come back tomorrow. I think that was the initial ruling of the court. My learned friend has brought in a new one now. I wish to say that the applicant is in court, but your loss shift did ask me whether I was going to call any witness and I said we're not going to call any witness. That was the stage my learned friend, she'll have indicated I would like to call a witness, but he cannot, as the Honorable Dean of the Court has said, and rightly too, there is no way a witness who has not been examined in chief can be cross-examined. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Femi Falana, for having said this, which should have been said by the court itself. Now, the Representative of Malawi, do you still wish once again to make any submissions before this court?
Much obliged, my, Mr. President. At this point, I think the government of Malawi will make its submissions, oral submissions, tomorrow at its allocated time. Thank you.
Merci.
Thank you. We have taken due note of what you have stated. And I believe that it is almost midday. We shall take a short break unless there are any other respondent states which are present. Are there any others? Any other respondent states present currently? It would seem there are none. So we shall take a 10-minute break. There is a hand raised. There is a hand which is raised. Please, can you introduce yourself to the court? Please?
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Judges of the African Court. My name is Mark Mulwombo. I am a Principal State Attorney. I will be assisted by Hangi Chang, Principal State Attorney, and Vivian Methode, State Attorney. Together, we will represent the United Republic of Tanzania. We have heard the submissions of the applicant, but we also had a few concerns. I know that the court has already made a ruling on the matter, but if the court will be kind enough to bear with us, Rule 43 would require that we had all the submissions and the pleadings of the parties to the matter before the court. And we state that on two grounds. First, that we are not taken by surprise on the issues that have been raised by the other party. But thirdly, as respondents, it would give us the opportunity to better prepare ourselves and to launch a better defense if we had to do any consultations with the other parties because some of the issues that have been alleged against the respondents have been alleged jointly and some severally. So it is a humble submission that it is important to get the proceedings if at all, as respondents, we were to launch a formidable and fair defense. Now, that having been said, Tanzania has not received any of the submissions of the other, actually quite stuff. But on the second issue, we were given allocation of time tomorrow and I believe it's from 11:00 a.m. We would wish to reserve that spot for tomorrow, 11:00 a.m. and make any submissions if at all. We will have submissions depending on the further directions of the court. My Lord, justices of the Honorable African Court, I humbly submit that is all.
Distinguished Representative of Tanzania, the court has duly noted your submissions. I am informed by the registry that it has taken care or made arrangements to forward to all the parties concerned the appropriate documents. Now, with respect to the procedure applicable in the court, all documents, any statements that parties seek to make would form part of what is to be submitted. Of course, Tanzania, you are scheduled for tomorrow and you are at liberty to use that period to make your views known. I think, ladies and gentlemen, we'll have a 10-minute break and we'll resume after that break. So 10 minutes. Thank you.
Mr. President, the registrar is asking for the floor. Mr. President, the registrar is asking.
Dr. Enau? Dr. Enau? Yes, Dr. Enau.
During this break, I just want to crave the indulgence of the parties that will be put on the waiting room because the judges have a brief consultation during this break and then after that consultation, they'll be brought back online. So I crave their indulgence to wait for us in the waiting room. Thank you, Honorable President.
So we are joined for 10 minutes.
Yeah, have you removed them?
Yeah, I'm in the waiting room.
Uh huh.